The March 7, 2016 meeting is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Peruka.
Pledge of Allegiance first or not?
Invocation first.
A prayer of repentance. Let's pray. Almighty God, we acknowledge and confess that we have sinned against you in thought, in word, and in deed, and that we have not loved you with all our heart, soul, mind, and strength; we have not loved our neighbor as ourselves. So we ask you to deepen within us the sorrow for the wrong that we have done and the good that we've left undone. Lord, you are full of compassion and gracious; you're slow to anger; you're plenteous in mercy; and there's always forgiveness with you. So we ask you to restore to us the joy of your salvation. We ask you to bind up that which is broken, give light to our minds, strength through our wills, and rest to our souls. Amen.
Amen. And tonight we have Troop 769 from Odenton to lead us in a pledge. You guys want to come over to the microphone and start us off when you're ready, when everybody's over there. I think I mentioned you from Odenton. Councilman Peruski, I think, is the only Eagle Scout that's up here on the council, and he is your councilman. Ready when you guys are.
Scout salute. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission is activated by the county under certain circumstances. Numbers in the public who qualify and law use only testify before the county's authority. This is a law required to certain information filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is actively per se to review the Ethics Commission information and employer of these chambers. If there are any questions about law being required, to speak or to contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office of some regular.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? Seeing no movement, we have none. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on forward. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? We ask you to please keep your comments to two minutes and state your name and address for the record. Just have a seat at the desk. Either way. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Olga Cortez, 113 Rose Lawn Road, Annapolis, Maryland 21403. My name is Olga Cortez, a parent of a fourth grader at Tyler Heights Elementary, a soon-to-be pre-kindergartner at Tyler Heights Elementary. I thank you all for representing the families of Tyler Heights in this long, arduous process that has been, patiently waiting for an updated MGT study, being recommended a number two, and a feasibility and design study so that our children and families at Tyler can finally receive the relief we have for so long been awaiting. I think your time and dedication in this matter. I realize you acknowledge that overcrowding is a severe issue with our more than 13 portables in our school, and view poor building structure as a safety concern, along with health hazards for our students using the same room as a gym, cafeteria, meeting space, and so forth. Our teachers do the best they can with their fighting spirits with what physically is a poor educational environment for our eager children wanting to learn and relieve their thirst for education in these primary years that are so pivotal in their education and success in their future lives. I think you're realizing our children are the most needy, especially in a Title I school with a majorly Hispanic and African-American Latino population, whom can easily be forgotten if we don't have members like you advocating and fighting for our rights to a fair and appropriate educational access. Because all of our children, regardless of their, excuse me, address and social economic background, legal status, race, ethnicity, and primary language, have a right to a healthy education and be whoever they wish to be in this life. I thank you for not forgetting us in this process. Our family at Tyler Heights desperately needs your help in reminding our county executive that for the same reason he supports renovation and construction of a high school, he should also respect and follow input studies which cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Remind him that we are patiently waiting for our school to have relief, as other elementary schools. And the early years are key in our children to want to go to high school, graduate, go to college, and lead successful lives. We are Team Tyler Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, just.
My name is Gisela Ruiz. I am also a mom of two kids in Tyler Heights Elementary, and I want to say thank you for taking our into consideration about construction of a new school. Also, I want to say that my child, she's in third grade, and she's in one of the portables outside of the school. And one day, she came with wet underwear, and she was crying, and she explained to me that she had to walk, like, from the outside, from the portable to the bathroom, and it's kind of a, like, I don't know, a block from there to the bathroom, and it was full. And for me, as a parent, my kids are the priority, and I felt sad that she's in those unhealthy conditions at the school. So I just want to make my testimony and say, so please take as a priority for the new construction of the school, and sorry about my English, and thank you for listening to us.
Did a great job. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any item any councilman would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, I do want to mention that Mr. Grasso is withdrawing Bill 1216. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or amendments constitutes a reading of the whole?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Grasso, does I speak at it? You are withdrawing.
Yeah, Mr. Fink. Well, just a short thing, because I don't want to take up a lot of time over here. I'm pulling Bill 1216 and to do with the nuisance, because the county executive or the administration has assured me that they can handle the problem that I'm having in my district and found their need for the law. So they've acted, which I can actually said very quickly, and these people have been given a fine for unsanitary conditions for their property. So he's pretty much said what he meant, and I'm fine with that. So I'm withdrawing it.
Thank you. I'll go back to my question. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or amendments constitutes a reading of the whole?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the amendments of February 16, 2016.
The meeting was called Board of Education, and the invitation to the [inaudible].
May I have a motion to approve the amendments?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendments February 16, 2016, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions being introduced this evening.
Resolution 616, resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Compilation of Laws. Resolution proposing amendment to the Charter of Anaromah County permitting the requirement of recodifying the Anaromah County Code of these every 10 years. Resolution 716, resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Effective Date of Ordinances, Appropriations. Resolution proposing amendment to the Charter of Anaromah County to provide that ordinances related to transfers of appropriations under Charter Section 711, supplementary appropriations under Charter Section 712, and amendments of the capital budget under Charter Section 716 shall take effect from the date they become law. Resolution 816, resolution entitled Charter Amendment for purchasing contract amendments. Resolution proposing amendment to the Charter of Anaromah County permitting the county council to increase the minimum amount of purchases in contracts requiring competitive bidding from $25,000 to mount up to $100,000. Resolution 916, resolution expressing need for land owned by the Board of Education and Annapolis Commons Development Project.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 916 and Bill numbers 416, 516, 616, 716, 816, 916, 1016, 1116, and 1916 out of order?
So moved.
Second.
There's a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Graff?
Aye.
Mr. Finn?
Aye.
Seven, the neighborhood of none and negative motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote out of order, Resolution 916 and Bill numbers 416 to 1116 and 1916 passes.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 916.
Resolution expressing need for land owned by the Board of Education for the Annapolis Commons Development Project.
Thank you. Call the admin up. Alex, do you want to come on? Mr. Shaknovich? I've got Ms. Blair up here, too. I don't know if you want to come up. Bernie, if you want to join. Anyone else? Mr. Hammond? Mr. Peps? Mr. Kane?
For the record, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, Anaromah County Public Schools. Anaromah County Public Schools was approached by the developer of the Boston property, which resides adjacent to our Reba Road headquarters complex and our Annapolis High School complex. It also adjoins your Heritage Office complex that Anaromah County government governs and manages. The developer was looking to maximize the beneficial use of their project and their property and approached us with an unsolicited offer to do a property exchange and a in-kind contribution, so a consideration for the property in order to essentially make his development work better and more efficiently, but there was a lot of public good in the offset. So our Board of Education superintendent weighed the offer and judged that it was beneficial to Anaromah County. Our Board of Education took a vote to access the property, given that it was not deemed useful for public school construction. We notified the state superintendent and the county government of same. So this resolution is essentially part of the cleanup effort to acknowledge that the Board of Education is surplusing and declaring access to properties that were on the transfer side, just so the council's fully aware the Board of Education received property in exchange. So essentially, it was a swap. Ms. Blair.
That's correct, and this resolution is required under the Education Article, the State Code 4-115, and the regulations that accompany that. For the, once the board offers the property to the county, the county has to respond. So we did receive the letter offering the property to the county, and this is to pass this resolution to respond that the property is needed for the Annapolis Commons Project. The ultimate plan is there's, I think the total amount that would be coming to the county is in excess of four acres. Is that what it is? Ultimately, .156 acres would be transferred from the county to the developer in fee simple, and then there are some other property upon which easements are being placed for stormwater and other purposes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumpa.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Just to refresh the council's memory, this was a couple of years ago. I spent a considerable amount of time meeting with the school system and county folks and the South River Federation, and this was that big junkyard, that big messy property that was behind the Heritage Complex. So that's now all cleaned up. The development has largely been constructed, and in the process of that, they ended up doing, I think, two separate stream restorations on that area, cleaning up all of the junkyard. And the bit that traded between the county and the board was to accommodate some athletic fields and get everything oriented right. So I thought we were going to do this resolution a while back, but I guess now we're doing it now. So it's in my district. I was part of this. I'm okay with it. Just wanted to let you guys know.
Great. Any other questions for the administration? Seeing none, thank you all. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 916? Seeing none, no movement. The public hearing on 916 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 916.
Resolution expressing need for land owned by the Board of Education for the Annapolis Commons Development Project.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Peruski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven, the neighborhood of none and negative, Resolution 916 passes.
Thank you. We will be holding a joint hearing for the following bills, 916, I'm sorry, 416 through 916. They all have to do with the budget. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bills 416 through 916.
Bill 416, in ordinance concerning current expense budget supplementary appropriations, public works, snow removal. Bill 516, in ordinance concerning current expense budget supplementary appropriations, Bittersweet Special Community Benefit District and the Level 1 or Special Community Benefit District. Bill 616, in ordinance concerning current expense budget third quarter fund transfer and supplementary appropriations. Bill 716, in ordinance concerning current expense budget transfer of appropriation, chief administrative office officer to the state attorney. Bill 816, in ordinance concerning current expense budget impact fee special revenue fund, capital budget program, Crofton High School supplementary appropriations. Bill 916, in ordinance concerning current expense budget impact fee special revenue fund, capital budget program, George Cromwell Elementary School supplementary appropriations.
Great. Ms. Marzick, want to start with 416?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. As we discussed at the work session, Bill 416 requests supplemental appropriation of $5 million to Department of Public Works for snow removal. The funding source for this appropriation will be from unappropriate general fund balance. As mentioned at the work session as well, we'll be offering amendment at the appropriate time to make this bill an emergency bill. Chris Phipps and Greg Afra from Department of Public Works, as well as Hujah Hasim and Tomy Adebo from the Budget Office are here to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Any questions from the council? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Phipps, the total, in the auditor's blue letter, the total was, that you have invoices for was 4.9, 4.9 million?
Well, we had, for the Blizzard Jonas, we've tallied up to about 4.04, and then subsequent to that, before that, we had another $900,000. So we're up around 4.9.
And is the, there was an event last week, a minor one, but I noticed a lot of salt brine put down. Was that, was there an extra?
That would be over and above. That wasn't included.
So there'd be like another transfer request?
Yes, we will anticipate we likely need another transfer in the fourth quarter.
Okay. Any idea what that is going to be for?
I don't know.
Is it just for that last event, or?
Well, it would be for whatever, you know, you've got to remember the information we put together for our FEMA request reimbursement was preliminary. So as we're, we're going to be going back and forth with FEMA to finalize those numbers, and if it's more.
What's the update on the FEMA?
I, well, we've submitted the information. The Emergency Management Office would have to respond, you know, on that. I don't know what, it takes a while.
I was going to say, what the process is.
As far as I understand, it can take up to a year for us to actually receive reimbursement.
Yikes. All right. Sorry. The, this will, this will get us down to like 1.8 million in the CAO contingency. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Marzick or Mr.? The accumulation of these, all the bills that are in front of us?
Actually, this is snow removal bill, we're using.
General fund.
Fund balance.
Right, but all of the bills that are, we're talking about all of the bills.
All the bills.
Yeah, cumulatively, right?
Cumulative, I remember 2.5.
Or is it 2?
2.5.
2.5, okay.
$2.5 million.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumpa.
Thank you. Just to pick up on the FEMA designation, I mean, my understanding, I heard the news report that, I guess, the president had approved the state. Does that mean that it will trickle down to the county? And even if it takes a year or something, should we expect some FEMA money to backfill this? And if so, what happens to that? I mean, it'll be another, it'll be, the next year's budget will be FY '17, right?
Correct, and it'll be some percentage. We're not going to get the full.
Yeah, so we have to front the money now regardless.
Right, absolutely.
But that will help us sometime down in the future.
Right.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on this bill? We'll go to next bill, 516. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 516 is for the Bittersweet and Willinore Special Community Benefit District. Bittersweet SCBD is requesting appropriation for fiscal year 2016, following a hold that the county placed on the district in 2013, which was due to outstanding financial statements. The district has now submitted those statements and is looking for appropriation of $15,481. Willinore is requesting $12,198 in additional appropriations. Tomy Adebo and Hujah Hasim are here from the Budget Office. Do you have any questions on these two?
Thank you. Any questions on 516?
Just, Mr. Chair, actually, just, I guess, a statement for anybody who's following this and doesn't know about these funds, but this is money the community has essentially taxed itself, but they need to come to us to get approval. So this isn't county money going out the door. We're just okaying them spending their own money.
Bernie, 616? Mr. Marzick, I should.
Bill 616 transfers $500,000 from the Video Lottery Fund to the Office of Finance. This bill reconciles the fiscal year '16 operating budget with the fiscal year '16 approved capital budget. This bill also requests $1,023,000 for the purchase of 30 police patrol vehicles. As we discussed during the work session as well, these vehicles replace 30 patrol vehicles within the Police Department. The funding source for this appropriation is the CAO contingency fund. In addition, there's a $5 million appropriation that will bring the Revenue Reserve Fund to $56.18 million, or about 4.1% of the estimated fiscal year '16 general fund revenues. According to the current code, this Revenue Reserve Fund can be up to 5% of the general fund revenues. Stephen Thro and Hujah Hasim from Budget Office, as well as Chief Altamari from the Police Department are here to answer any questions about this bill.
Great, thank you. Any questions on 616? Mr. Chair. Ms. Smith?
And just to reiterate, please just state what the 500K, 500,000 VLT funds will be used to fund which projects? I mean, I know, but just want to make sure you guys sort of spell that out.
Right. This is, this goes for, I believe it's for the Severn Harmon Pedestrian Network Capital Project, right? It came in through the LDC.
Councilman Smith, for the record, John Hammond, Budget Officer, this was a project that was in the approved capital budget for fiscal year '16. The money was put in the operating budget, but it wasn't put, it was put in the county executive's office that needs to move over to the finance, non-departmental, so it can find its way into the capital budget. This is just cleaning up a technical omission in the approved budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker?
Chief, so when we had the workshop, I know your budget person was here, and we asked the question, where did the request for the vehicles come from? And they said the Budget Office. So while I'm sure you're not complaining about the possible addition of additional police cars, in, could you tell us a little bit about what and how that sort of came about? I mean, did you actually have any involvement in it? And was the person who was here just unaware of it? Or what was the genesis of that, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. For the record, Chief Tim Altamari of the Anaromah County Police Department. There is a history to the request. The discussions go back several years as the fiscal climate through the last five or six years got drier. We stopped replacing cars into the fleet at the rate where we needed.
Where we're stretching them out.
Viable. Stretching them out like a limo.
Right. You're driving around in limos?
I set myself up for that one, didn't I?
You did, you did, sorry.
So our internal policy for the county for years was 100,000 miles, we start trying to look at getting the car out, because above 100,000 miles, the per mile cost of operating the vehicle in the fleet goes exponentially up, and it gets worse as it goes on. So I think you've heard me talk before that the mileage of the fleet became very high. We have a fair percentage, we're getting better, last year and this year are definitely getting us better. A fair percentage of the fleet was angling towards 200,000 miles. So when you do that, you start to look at what happens when cars have wrecks. And when you have a car with 30,000 miles and a year and a half on it, you're going to put money into fixing it. And when you don't, when you have a car with 170,000 and six and a half or seven years on it, you're going to total it, because it's not worth it to fix the car. So you look at that dynamic, superimposed on the fact that in '12 and '13, our replacements went way down. We get a decrepit fleet. And what we've done to survive through the very lean times, and I got to tell you, one of the first questions I asked on budget when I took over was, man, I've got this many cars, and I'm looking at about 50 in our direct charge line item. So rather than doing it through the lease rate like we're supposed to for cars, we had an exponential growth in the amount of cars that we direct charge. So what that does is means all the agreements that we have with the central services, with the garage for replacement, become null and void, and I start as the guy who's, baby the budget is, start eating the costs for everything. And last year, when, year and almost a half ago when I took over, I said, wow, that's a lot of cars in direct charge. What are we going to do about it? And when we started talking to the Budget Office, they said, we know it's a problem. We're going to get there, but we just took over, you just took over, the county exec just took over. So we're going to have a holistic approach. We're going to look at it more. And I think as we get to here, the 30 cars, is how we start to get better on the back end of that thing. And I will tell you that when you look at my budget for last year, the direct charge cost me between $850 and $1 million. And you look at the numbers that we went over, and I was between $850 and $1 million. And I'm not drawing a direct correlation, but it sure didn't help me, if that makes sense. Did I answer your question okay?
You did. Mr. Marzick, in the conversation that we had during the work session, we were trying to figure out, I guess, and kind of understand how the money flowed around, especially when a car got totaled. And that was part of the purpose, as I understand it, of requesting these additional cars. And then in the blue letter, the auditor pointed out that a recommended policy change would be to have the Self Insurance Fund pay for a vehicle when it was totaled, instead of us having to go through this process of transferring money mid-year to, to make whole the fleet, so that they're not scrounging for the scrap cars to fill slots when a car, when a good car's totaled. So that recommendation is in there. Does the administration have any position on that recommendation? My understanding is it's a policy change, but, I mean, I don't know how the Self Insurance Fund deals with other organizations, like, let's say, the Board of Ed. Do they have to scrounge and scrap for cars? Does the Self Insurance Fund pay for their vehicle to be replaced?
I don't know the answer to that for the Board of Ed vehicles, and to my knowledge, we haven't had discussions internally since we received the blue note as far as whether or not there be a new policy, but we can take a look at that and get back to the council.
Mr. Hammond, is that, is that just an internal policy, the way that that's being handled currently, or is it a matter of legislation?
Actually, we've recognized the problem in the lease rate going forward, and we now have a factor built into the lease rate to recognize the fact that we will have cars that are going to be involved in accidents. So we built that into the lease rate going forward, so that when we have situations with wrecked cars, we can address it in a timely fashion.
So you won't be coming back to us like this again in the future?
No, because it's, again, it's being built into the lease rate.
It's built in. Why wouldn't the Self Insurance Fund just cover that, though? I mean, I know it's maybe moving money from one pocket to the other, but it seems like if the Self Insurance Fund is doing that with other organizations, I ask kind of a loaded question. They actually are doing it, my understanding is, with the Board of Education. If a Board of Ed car gets totaled, the Self Insurance Fund is paying for that vehicle to be replaced. So why wouldn't we just do it that way? I mean, they're sort of acting as our insurance agent. You know, it's like our own insurance company, basically, in-house, right? I mean, am I off on that?
No, I mean, they are essentially our insurance company, and whatever recovery they get goes into the Self Insurance Fund and is available for whatever else the Self Insurance Fund needs to cover. But we think that it's a much more prudent way to handle this and get the car back into fleet as quickly as we can, to have funds set aside in the replacement rate to deal with the car that is wrecked. Because when we get, when we get a car that's wrecked, we, you know, we're not going to get the full, full value of the car back through the insurance proceeds, but we want to get a new car on the road.
Insurance proceeds being, if it wasn't our fault, but in the case that it is our fault and the vehicle's totaled, why would we have a policy that does it one way with the Board of Education and does it a separate way with another agency within the county?
Again, I'm not that conversant with what the, what they're doing for the Board of Education and the Self Insurance Fund.
Okay. All right. But you're adjusting the lease rate to take.
Right, to deal with this.
That's your.
Right, to deal with this issue with the police. Yeah, and the chief's right. I mean, this goes way back to the fact that, you know, during the recession, we were...
Oh, I remember. We were, yeah, I definitely remember being on the council at the beginning and trying to trim back the number of cars and really, it was a balancing act, and I understand that. It was not fun, no, it wasn't. Mr. Marzick, since we've also got a couple of other topics in this bill, the $5 million transfer to the Rainy Day Fund, what's, I guess, what is the administration's thought behind moving that? I mean, we're like less than 60 days away from having the budget in front of us. It just seems like maybe it'd be a better time to look at it, it's less than 60 days from now, as part of the entire budget package, rather than moving $5 million and putting it somewhere where we actually have, we can't touch it. I mean, once it moves over to the Rainy Day Fund, it's there. And so, if we're looking at the budget holistically, maybe $5 million is a small amount, but the amount that we have to, you know, move and play with, I guess, during that budget process is very little. Why would we sort of handcuff ourselves going into the budget process two, less than two months away?
Well, I think our goal is to try to increase the investment in the Rainy Day Fund. We've had this discussion. We made an increase last year in the Rainy Day Fund. We now have the ability to counsel through the legislation to increase it now, up to 5%, as we discussed at the work session earlier tonight. But I think we have an opportunity now that we could build up the Rainy Day Fund even in advance of the fiscal year 17 budget. And I think, you know, we may have the opportunity to build the Rainy Day Fund more in the fiscal year 17 budget as well.
And, Mr. Walker, if I could add, also, we're going to the bond market as we do every year. This is the time of the year we go to the bond market, and we've, would, you know, it helps us in our representations to the rating agencies that we're committed to building up the Rainy Day Fund. Step one was to increase, to allow for the increase through the passage of the ordinance, and step two is to actually follow through with it. And from our, putting, working on the 2017 budget field, that this is something that won't cause any problems in the 2017 budget formulation, and it's a good signal to, again, to send to the financial markets that not only did we increase the potential to have more funds in the Rainy Day Fund, we're following through on it, as we have for the last couple of years, as we've built up the balance in the Rainy Day Fund following the recession.
I guess, just given the fact that we're, I mean, obviously, we don't know what's going to be in the budget, but I'm assuming there's, you know, requests for increases in pay, things like that, that you all are negotiating now. And it just seems like if we're putting $5 million over there now without being able to see the full picture, it just seems like we're being asked to basically tie our own hands, less than, less than two months away. I'm just curious, is the...
We wouldn't be looking at this $5 million as a, as a alternate source of providing for pay increases for the next year. This is one-time money that's, that we've accumulated in the fund balance, and this is a one-time kind of an appropriation. So, that's, we have one-time money available for a one-time purpose that can be very beneficial to us long-term, so that's...
Then why not put it over in like the CAO contingency account for issues like this with the police cars that come forward? It's a one-time sort of thing, or even OPEB as an example. Mr. Trumpauer just whispered in my ear. That's another...
And we've, and we've done that for 2016. We think that there's no problem with the 2016 budget relative to our available fund balance and our contingency funds to get through 2016. And again, still have some funds available to support the 2017 budget of expenditures of a one-time nature.
I'm going to back up just for a second and ask about one of the previous bills, because it triggered in my head when we were talking about fund balance. And that was the one that we dealt with, 416, that had the, there was a note in the blue letter about the TIF fund, fund balance that was, there was a debate about last year during budget, if you'll recall, and I understand there's about $2.5 million sitting over there. Why, my understanding is, based on what we have in here, that that's, you're going to bring that over in this budget that's coming down to us. Why wouldn't we use something like that, since it's kind of sitting out there? I mean, are you, is the administration committing to spending the $2.5 million that's sitting there in that FY 2015 TIF fund, fund balance? Are they bringing that over into the budget?
It'll be part of the 2017 budget that we'll be utilizing for one-time items in the 2017 budget.
It will?
Yes.
All right. I think that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Bruski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thank you again for calling me on Saturday to explain certainly about this, which was stated earlier today. But I have a question about pool cars versus individual cars. So, I had a conversation with some folks in several jurisdictions, and people were saying that from a perspective that take-home cars actually are treated better than pool cars. And I'm just curious, how far are we away from just providing, you know, take-home cars for everybody, when we're talking about purchasing cars? I mean, with the volume, whatever else? I'm just curious about that.
So, we, this year, we took some steps to try to get there. You know how we have kind of different, corporal embolists, officer labor ranks, but, so, we were trying to get there to get all corporals to take their own personal car, that they, even if they live out of the county, they don't take home, but they'll put it at a firehouse. Because you're right, the cars get maintained better, they have longer longevity, and quite frankly, it's hard to quantify, but there's a public safety benefit to having a cop in uniform driving a car from A to B. And quite, quite frequently, we have on emergent, high-stress, high-risk calls, off-duty cars as the first or second car there. So, we want to get there. We've had some setbacks as we, as we cannibalize cars, and we had to use them up this year on that front. We, we got that close to getting all the corporals done, and then we've had to actually take a couple, as we've gotten in-county officers coming into the stream, because you got to give an in-county officer a car. So, it's something that I'll keep working on. I don't know how close we are, but it's a priority for me. And as we move forward and we look at the health of the fleet, we'll keep trying to get there. Because I agree, every cop should have a car. Thank you.
Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I might ask Mr. Hammond to come back up. I had a follow-up on the line of questioning you and Mr. Walker engaged on. Likewise, you know, the $5 million transfer to the Rainy Day Fund caught my eye, because I'm sure you'll remember. It was a priority of mine during the last budget, but we were told, you know, the administration didn't want to lock up that money at the time. I fully understand and appreciate the reason why you want to put it in now, and that makes sense to me. It's one-time money, and you have it. So, I'm kind of reading between the lines, and I'm thinking, okay, this must mean that revenue projections and everything going into the next budget must look okay, because we have this one-time money available, and we're putting it in the Rainy Day Fund instead of kind of saving it for another need, like I think Mr. Walker was kind of openly wondering about. And I know, if you guys are anything like me, you're hearing from our county teachers, you know, you're hearing from other people. We know that there's, I think, some public safety unions that are going to negotiations again. So, we're going to have demands on the money. I guess my open-ended question is, are we sure $5 million in the Rainy Day Fund right now is the best thing to do going forward into next year's budget? And I'm prepared to believe that it is, but I just want some reassurance from you.
Well, I think there's a, again, reiterate the point, that there's a difference about one-time money.
Absolutely.
And ongoing.
Sure thing.
Revenue. And, you know, we have one-time money, and what we really tried to do, and we had a long discussion during the budget about the utilization of one-time money for one-time purposes.
I remember that quite well.
The two-word structural deficit were a big issue, and so, we don't want to get a situation where we're using one-time money for cost-of-living adjustments, merit increases, because those are continuing costs, and you're chasing your tail. So, here we have an opportunity. We have some, some available fund balance, and the Rainy Day Fund is something very near and dear to my heart, to try to build that up and have an adequate balance there. And we've received very high marks from the rating agencies because of our aggressive efforts to try to refurbish or to refund the Rainy Day Fund that was drawn down by $33 million during the recession. So, we want to send that positive message, and again, we have the one-time money to do it, and that's great. You know, we're working hard on the 2017 budget, and, you know, we'll continue to work hard on it, but that's really more, much more of an exercise of recurring revenue being sufficient to do those recurring.
Understood. And again, you know, I think I support what you're doing here. I'm just fast-forwarding in my mind a few months, and I'm thinking, I don't want to be in a position as the ultimate fiscal authority of thinking, man, if we only had that $5 million back. And so, I just didn't want the opportunity to pass us by where we didn't have that conversation. And I'm glad, I'm glad we had it. And I'm certainly glad that Mr. Grasso passed the bill to expand the Rainy Day Fund. Good on you, Mr. Grasso. I wish someone could have done that before. Well, it wasn't for lack of effort.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Any other questions on 616?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bruski.
Chief, do police cars get wrecked more than civilian cars? Is that measurable, or is that measured?
So, we measure how many we wreck. Whether, I can tell you, it's more than civilian cars or not, Councilman, that's beyond my ken. We certainly know cops are going to wreck cars. As you look around the region, our numbers compared to other police departments, given our size and what we do, don't, don't alarm me.
We don't wreck more than they do.
No, and truly, as you, as you benchmark out there and you start to look, sometimes we get a silly answer back when we ask, because they say it's the cost of doing business. Police wreck cars. We know that. Why is it such a big deal in your county? But it's a big deal because we have to be fiscally responsible. So, we, we look at it. I will tell you that, that we use a benchmark that's different for a civilian driver. So, a civilian driver has an accident, they're either at fault or not at fault. Police, when they wreck a car, they're either at fault, not at fault, or the accident is preventable. And even if they're not at fault, we have a very holistic review of every accident that a board goes through, that the risk manager is on the board with members of the department. And preventable is a, is a lesser burden of proof on us than at fault. So, we routinely have accidents where the officers are not at fault, but we find it preventable. And then anytime a preventable accident occurs, there is some level of discipline enacted.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to Bill 716.
Mr. Chairman, Bill 716 transfers $500,000 of appropriation from a CAO contingency account to the Office of the State's Attorney. The Office of the State's Attorney requests additional funds for the current expenses that exceed the budget in relation to unattainable turnover and temporary pay. Jessica Lays is here from the Budget Office, Wes Adams, the State's Attorney, as well as Nancy Duden from the Office of Law. This was a bill we discussed at length at the work session as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on 716?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sure that the panel has reviewed the page and a half of the collector's edition first-ever Jody Dickinson blue letter. And, I mean, I, I think this does a good job of capturing what, what the transfer is doing. And I have to say, my biggest concern about this is not the current transfer, but it's what the Auditor's Office is projecting will have to transfer again at the end of the year. And so, I'm just pining for myself, but I think I'm generally inclined to do this transfer, but I may not be inclined to do another one. And I wanted to give you a chance to react to that. Do you anticipate having to come back for a fourth-quarter transfer for the State Attorney's Office?
Most likely, we will be doing a fourth-quarter transfer. This was based on a snapshot in time that we use November data to project out. At that time, we needed about $480,000, so that's why we put $500,000 in the bill. Since then, payroll has posted, the January colas have posted. It's a lot of moving parts. This bill also only focused in on personal services, not other items such as contractual services, expert witnesses, ongoing costs that are hard to project out until the end of the year. So, like we do with all the departments in May, we'll be running a more accurate with more data projection, and if more funds are available, we'll be coming back down with a fourth-quarter transfer. The reason we're not amending the bill tonight with that dollar amount is because likewise, we might have some savings between now and May, moving people against grants, people leaving, that again, we're not able to project out at this time. So, there may not be as great as a need in May when we bring down the fourth-quarter transfer.
And if, I mean, if we just drift into the land of the theoretical for a second, if, if the subsequent transfer was not approved, I mean, is it, is it possible that the State's Attorney could make up those savings within the current budget without, you know, laying people off or something? Or is there literally like no other savings to be found?
Well, currently, they're trying to retain some savings. We were holding a vacancy vacant, making decisions more fiscally conservative for the rest of the year. So, there's an attempt being made to not continue to overspend, but there's no promises that we would be able to absorb the additional expenditures at the end of the year.
And last question, if I might, Mr. Chair. I see that the county attorney is here, and there's a bit in the blue letter about, I guess, that, that we have to fund it within, or the county has to fund it within the confines of the budget and everything. But is, this isn't like a liquor board thing where we have to fund it, right? I mean, does anybody know?
Yes.
It is?
Well, in the sense...
So, we have to fund it no matter what?
No.
I mean, let's take...
The State's Attorney actually has more claim on the money, in my legal opinion, than a liquor board. You need to separate those two out in your minds, because the State's Attorney...
The last thing I want to do is think about the liquor board.
So, let's just not even mention that.
Please don't get him fired up.
But the State's Attorney is an elected constitutional officer. He has certain consta, he or she, in this case, he, has certain constitutional requirements to carry out in his office. So, what you're really being asked to do is to determine the reasonableness of his request, and I'll certainly defer to Mr. Adams to explain why he needs the people in his office that he needs.
And, I mean, you did that at the work session.
But whether we're talking about this one, or whether we're talking about a possible fourth-quarter one, we have to give them the money to run their office, as long as what they're requesting is reasonable.
I understand that. I guess what troubles me, again, leading into budget and thinking about ourselves as the ultimate fiscal authority, and, I mean, I like the State's Attorney. Guy's got probably the firmest handshake in Annapolis. Nice work this round. But, you know, if he weren't, you know, and this is, again, no, I'm not saying, suggesting this or anything, but there's no incentive for him not to overspend, or any State's Attorney, right? I mean, if, if, what's, what's to stop a State's Attorney now or in the future from coming with an additional overage if we have to fund it? It just takes our role away from us.
And I understand that. I guess the electorate stops that to a certain extent, but just to be clear, from a legal point of view, while the county council, it's completely different than funding my office, where you have position control. The council has no position control over the State's Attorney.
I appreciate that.
So, it is, you know, Mr. Adams has given a certain amount of deference as to what his needs are under the opinions of the Attorney General and the case law and the Constitution. And it really depends on, once he explains what it is he needs or answers any follow-up questions from the work session, whether you think that's reasonable or not.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and I actually, and you brought up the fact, I mean, he is elected, so he's accountable as well. I was thinking to myself, you know who would love to be able to exceed their budget is Chris Phipps, right? I mean, sure, DPW would love to be able to do that. Chris Phipps, he's not elected, so that is an important difference, so I do appreciate that. And sorry, you know, again, I'm not impugning anybody, I'm just wondering aloud, trying to come to grips with the role of this council and this bill, so thank you for explaining that.
Mr. Duden, the council doesn't have position control either?
Not for the State's Attorney's Office.
Theoretically, I mean, Wes, Mr. Adams could go, or any State's Attorney, rather, could go out and hire eight new attorneys this year. I think the State's Attorney could easily justify needing more attorneys at all time with their caseload. So, you're saying he could go out and hire 10 more attorneys?
What I am really saying is, once he asks for his budget, and you give him a certain amount of money, and say his budget is $9 million, he can take that $9 million, and he can divide it up on 100 attorneys and one clerical staff? Or he can say, I need 50 attorneys and 50 paralegals? 50 attorneys and 50 paralegals, you know, however that works to get his constitutional job done. And so, your question kind of harkens back to Mr. Trumpauer's, what's to stop him from saying, I'm going to hire all the attorneys I want, and by the end of the year, I'm going to have 200 people on my staff? And the answer is, he's got to stand for election, and he's got to be fiscally responsible.
He could easily justify the increase in attorneys. I mean, he can easily go out and say, we've got 3,000 cases, I mean, he can easily justify that. So, he could continue, he or she, and this is not towards Mr. Adams, I think he does a great job, but the State's Attorney could easily just blow their budget out the water, and you're saying it's not a thing a county council can do about it?
Oh, absolutely. You can decide that it's not reasonable, and you can vote the bill down, which is why I say I defer to Mr. Adams on explaining why it is he needs this money and answering your questions. But you have to do that from a, you have to truly make that determination.
But isn't that determination we make on every spending bill? It's not necessary, or it is?
I would hope so.
Right, so I mean, so in reality, it's no different than any other office. If we feel it's not necessary, we don't approve it. If we feel it's necessary, we do approve it.
Except that not all the other offices are headed by somebody with a constitutional responsibility to carry out the duties that Mr. Adams is charged with carrying out. While we want to remove all the snow for our citizens, no offense to Chris Phipps, but while we want to provide that service, there is not a constitutional mandate that we do that. There is a constitutional mandate that Mr. Adams be allowed to do his job, and do it to the best of his abilities with the resources that he reasonably...
Sure, but if we deem it's not necessary, that he need, that office doesn't need additional five attorneys, we don't have to fund those additional five attorneys.
That's correct.
Just like if we don't deem that that snow should have been removed, we don't have to approve the $5 million. It would have melted eventually, Mr. Phipps. I mean, there you go. Thank you. Ms. Smith.
I don't know why the Chris Phipps thing.
Because he's center.
If we don't plow snow, we're all going to be out of office. I can say that right now. So, when it comes to the, in the previous fiscal year, did that, this is probably for Ms. Lays, probably more so than the county attorney, or the State's Attorney, has it been, has it fluctuated like this, the budget for the State's Attorney's Office when it comes to personnel? Last year, did we have significant shortfalls on the personnel budget, where we had to come back for the fourth-quarter transfers, or the year before that? Has it been one of these things where it's up and down, or is this a unique year, or a unique situation this year?
I think that this is, some of this is normal turnover, just doing business, hiring people. I think they were in the fourth-quarter transfer in FY '15, but I don't know before that, so I don't think it's ad-normal for them to need additional resources, but I don't think it's ever been at this multitude or size in the last couple of fiscal years.
And if the State's Attorney, Mr. Adams, if he wanted to sort of weigh in, certainly, so more than one...
Well, one of the things that was different this year than occurred in fiscal year '15, Councilman Smith, is we had 11 people leave. It was a payout of almost $100,000, and replacing commensurate in-kind level lawyers with the lawyers that left was a difficult process for us. And so, some of that, in addition, the need for me to keep lawyers in a courtroom prosecuting cases, we've increased heroin prosecutions by 150%. I think we had three or four times the amount of murder trials this past year as we did the year before, required that I was filling spots immediately. And so, we had lawyers, in lieu of seeing a $211,000 attrition that was built into my budget, we had lawyers leaving on a Friday of a pay period and starting the following, and the new lawyers starting the following Monday. And that really makes up for the bulk of the transfer that we're requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruska.
Mr. Adams, certainly some of the questions were asked earlier, but I know this is kind of a precursor for the next budget, because you would think that we'd get this settled when we move forward. I think it would be helpful for me, and again, as we present the budget in May, is to benchmark us against other jurisdictions. How many attorneys do they have? What's their caseload? And what is their pay? Because I know, I've been asking questions about that. So, as we move forward with the budget, that would be certainly helpful, because I want to know, if we're compared to Baltimore County, how many attorneys we have on staff? How many cases? I mean, certainly, there's an increase in crime dips, whatever else, but I think benchmarking might be helpful for me and you, because as we progress forward, certainly have that. So, just kind of a comment, I don't know what you think about that.
We can work on that, Councilman Pruska. I can talk from personal experience in, you know, obviously Baltimore City and Prince George's County. Prince George's County, we had approximately 80 non, and not including the grant lawyers, approximately 82 or 84 at any given moment. The budget there was, I think, $18 million annually, caseloads, significantly different from up and down the level, but they had more particular lawyers, more in juvenile, more in district court, more in the various divisions. They were able to specialize in different divisions, like we had a family felony violence unit there. There was a dedicated homicide division there. There was a dedicated drugs and gun unit there. And so, not all the offices compare apple to apple, because my size, 48 lawyers, doesn't allow me to specialize, allow my lawyers to specialize on independent case, specific cases, in the same way that some of these larger jurisdictions allow them to do. We can, I can certainly work to create some benchmarks for you so that you have that information, but it doesn't necessarily translate office to office in the same way.
No, I understand, and I think it would be helpful, and I know the auditor, you know, we've kind of talked about this with blue letters, but even to look back, though, five years and projection, that's all, at least it gives us an idea of where we're going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Adams, would you mind explaining the difference between the 2% and the 3%? Because there was some issue about that back and forth, and it was mentioned in the letter, and I know we sort of had a conversation about it, I just want to kind of get it on the record and have a conversation.
Certainly, and I appreciate the question, Councilman Walker. We, when the budget was passed and Mr. Schu had said we were part of public safety, included us, I believe we provided the page to Ms. Dickinson in his budget proposal, and it was announced publicly as part of public safety that the State's Attorney's Office was, I believe, he talked about funding four positions, and so, it was my understanding that we did have the 3%. I spoke directly with the county executive and was told that we could go forward with that, and as a result of that, I, and consulting with our budget folks, with the budget folks here in the county, that's why I put the 3% in.
But actually, what was budgeted, Ms. Lays, was only 2%?
The budget included a 2% placeholder, correct.
So, where was the breakdown in communication, then, between the county executive's office and the budget office, or? Because if you all budgeted 2%, and he paid 3, there's some disconnect there somewhere.
At the time that we built the budget, we anticipated 2%. The decision was made to give 3% after the budget.
Okay. Another question for you, Mr. Adams. The folks, part of the issue of discrepancy, I guess, or the overage, is related to merit increases that you gave to a couple of folks on the staff, were those, I have a list of the folks here, the names, were those people that were currently already employed in your office, or were they people that you just hired?
I believe, first of all, they were already hired. I didn't hire any additional people and then give them merit raises, but I believe the people that were requested were younger lawyers, their salaries were brought up to...
So, the people you, the people that you gave the merit increases were two people that were already in the department when you got there?
I believe that's correct, and in particular, we don't give merit raises, because we're not part of the merit system, but...
Okay, well, I don't know what the term, what term would you use, then? Sorry.
We tried to get these younger lawyers who were commensurate with felon, these are circuit court felony lawyers, getting paid at just slightly above entry level and significantly below entry level of the county attorneys. So, these are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lawyers, all of whom were hired before I became elected, all of whom had been promoted throughout the office because of the turnover of the, some of the 11 that left, and...
Oh, so, so when you had people leave, you bumped these people up, and so, that was the reason for the pay?
Correct.
And then, the people that came in, did they come in at the low rate, or did they come in at a higher rate than you were paying before?
When we were replacing at entry level, which is what I turned over, almost all of the district court, they were brought in at entry level.
So, the new people were coming in, were getting paid less than the old people that left?
That's correct.
And the people that were in those slots bumped up a slot, which is why you've increased the pay on those folks?
That's correct.
Okay. There's, besides the six, I understand there is one additional attorney, it looks like that you might have brought over with you from Prince George's, and his rate was it, and that his rate got bumped, like, almost nine points. Is there, was there a specific reason for that?
Due to the increase in his duties.
Okay, all right. When we were in the work session, you mentioned, and I think there was knowledge of this too even before with your predecessor who was in there, and the predecessor before that, that there was sort of a disconnect right between the State's Attorney's Office and the Office of Personnel, and maybe that was for control reasons or whatever, but it sounded like when we were having the conversation during work session, that you'd indicated that you were trying to work a little more closely with the Office of Personnel. In particular, I think there was, you know, comments about, or at least ones I heard anyway, about keeping track of, like, vacation hours on a scratch notepad type of deal versus, like, working through the HR system. So, is it, is it, it's my understanding that you're moving forward with sort of integrating a little more with the, can you tell me a little bit about that, just briefly?
Yes, and thank you, because Ms. Dickinson's predecessor made some recommendations to the State's Attorney's Office about how we could more efficiently function with the county council and the budget, and making sure that we're online with the county. We have moved, and I believe as of next week or the next pay period, that I believe will be on the county's ADP system.
Okay.
And so, I think we implemented every single one of the requests by Ms. Sutherland before she departed.
And the personnel files, I guess, are those, you're still keeping those separate, right? I mean, there's not...
Those are our personnel files from my agency.
Right, but it's just, you're just using the payroll system and some of the tracking for vacation and kind of that stuff.
Correct, so that we don't fall into some of the...
The abyss.
Yes.
Got it. If someone was to come over from the county to your office, let's say, is there a, the file would just move from there, from the county office over to your office? Like, if you hired somebody from the county?
If...
I'm going to have to defer to the county attorney on that.
Yeah, for the record, Nancy Duden, county attorney. If someone, for instance, from my office, if an attorney from my office went to Mr. Adams' office, there would still be a file in the Office of Personnel for that individual's time as an assistant county attorney, and then, a new file would start at Mr. Adams' office.
Would he have access to the file here at the county, though?
He would not have access to the personnel file here in the county, no.
Okay.
Nor would I have access to his file, his personnel files.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else on 716? We'll move to 816. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 816, request supplemental appropriation for $500,000 in available impact fees to Crofton High School, the Crofton High School capital project. This will allow for the design of Crofton High School to begin before the end of the fiscal year. Alex Chaknovich from the County Public Schools is here, as well as Amy Brandenburg and Kurt Svensson from the Budget Office. Again, we discussed this bill at length at the work session as well.
We remember. Chaknovich, anything? Just want to wait for questions?
This is Alex Chaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. We urge the council to support and pass the legislation as presented.
Any questions for the council?
Mr.?
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you. Not really a question. We did have a robust discussion about this at the work session, but just on the record, I would like to state again my concern, although I fully anticipate supporting this, I want to make sure that my view, and I suspect the view of many people in my community, is on the record that while we're going to move forward with Crofton High School, we want to make sure that that does not come at the expense of priority projects that are actually ahead of Crofton High School on the list. And I think that's the MGT list, the facility study, but it's also the Board of Ed's priority list as well. And really, we're talking about Edgewater and Tyler Heights in my district and some other ones. So, I'll be working with the administration, hopefully during the budget, to make sure that all these projects are treated fairly in the FY '17 budget.
Absolutely. Look forward to working with you on it. We've had discussions already, and we'll continue over the next few months.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Move on to Bill 916. Mr. Marzick.
Bill 916 is to request the $250,000 supplemental appropriation for George Cromwell Elementary School. This school has been slated to begin design, and this will allow this to occur in the fiscal year. Again, same panel here for this bill as well.
Great. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Thank you. Actually, this question is valid for both bills. The impact fee money that this is coming from, it says that the money is from unanticipated revenues. Is that, like, extra developments, or is it fund balance?
Kurt Svensson from the Budget Office. We have actual, we have, based on actual collections for '15, they exceeded estimates.
Okay, and so, how do you, how do you estimate what you're going to get into the impact reserve fund, and then, how do you do better than that?
It's probably one, it's probably one of the most difficult revenue sources to project, so what we have done historically is we are very conservative with our estimates, and we basically don't count it until we got it, and then, when we've got it, we appropriate it in this manner.
And this fund can only be used for certain things. I presume school construction is one of those.
Absolutely, that adds capacity in accordance with the determinations made by the Office of Planning and Zoning Officer, and within the districts in which those fees were collected.
Right. I guess the point I'm making is that there's a very limited amount of things that this unanticipated revenue could be spent on, and so, you guys are putting this forward as an appropriate use of that revenue. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker.
Sort of to tie onto what Mr. Trumpauer said, are there unanticipated funds, and I know that the way the education impact fee works, as far as, you know, having a map and having areas mapped out in the county where the funds are collected, and the funds can only be spent in those designated areas, are there unanticipated funds in other categories or other geographic regions of the county? Because I know that counties divided up. I know if you overlay the impact fee zones for education over top of the feeder systems, it doesn't really quite line up. But is there extra money somewhere else, or is that...
Overall, the experience in fiscal '15 was very good, so I think you can expect to see in the upcoming budget us proposing to apply those impact fees that we've found and realized.
Okay, so, so why wouldn't, if there's extra funds in the other districts, why wouldn't you also fund, like, money for Tyler Heights or an advanced...
There's no line item in the budget, that's why.
Okay.
Believe me, I would have asked that, if there was a line item in the budget, but you can't fund a project that doesn't exist.
Exactly right. Good enough. All right, thank you.
And Councilman Walker, just for added clarity for colleagues, as Kurt indicated, it is only for capacity addition purposes. So, it cannot be used for replacement of existing building components, et cetera. It's specifically tailored towards capacity generating expansions only. So, it is a very narrowly defined lane of projects that are eligible for a such...
And then, even the projects would be a specific section of the project if it's a replacement school, so, got it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all. We'll go on to the public hearing. We have two people that have signed up, but if anyone else wishes to speak on any of these bills that we just heard, please come forward. We do have Mr. Patrick Enright and Mr. Jonathan Bonifas. And then, again, if there's anyone else wishing to speak on any of these spending bills, we've got plenty of room up front. And, Mr. Bonifas, we'll start with you, since you're front and center.
Sounds good. Good evening, Chairman Fink, Vice Chairman Grasso, Councilman. My name is Jonathan Bonifas, lead organizer of Bill Crofton High School, and I live at 1638 Howard Chapel Road in Crofton. Bill Crofton High School fully supports Bill 816. This forward funding of the Crofton High School project shows the IAC and the Board of Public Works that Annapolis County is fully prepared to follow the master plan laid out in the recently conducted MGT strategic facility study. In regards to high schools, that study said building a Crofton High School was our county's highest priority, with Arundel High School over capacity and close to 2,000 homes being built... With Arundel High School overcapacity and close to 2,000 homes being built in its feeder system, it's easy to see why. The same holds true for South River High School. With overflow from Annapolis and continued growth in Crofton, South River High School is overcapacity as well. Gentlemen, in the past three years, we have testified here well over a dozen times on the need for this high school. I personally cornered just about all of you at restaurants, banquets, club meetings, polling places, to further express the need. And we have always presented you with the facts and data to support the need and also informed you of the emotional aspect involved. Crofton Middle School remains the only middle school in the county to feed its students to two separate high schools, one in Odenton and the other in Edgewater. The tears of sadness on the last day of school, as friends, teammates, band members, and other groups of soon-to-be ninth graders say goodbye to each other, are all too real. This bill gets us one step closer to keeping our students from Crofton together and further uniting our community. So, tonight, we ask you to please support and vote for Bill 816. Getting a head start on this project is not only good for Crofton, but good for all the projects in line behind it as well. Thank you for all you do for our great county.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifas. Mr. Enright?
Good evening Chairman Fink, Vice Chairman Grasso, members of the council, and ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live in Huntwood Drive in, in Gambrels. I'm here to talk specifically about Bill 616. I'm of the opinion that the law should be accurate in its substance and precise in its construction. I think I've detected a flaw in the title of the fund referenced in Section 1 on page 2, specifically lines 14, 15, and 26, 27. A word has been dropped out of the codified title. It was codified in Bill 9212 back in 2013. And I would respectfully request that you consider an amendment, a technical amendment, I believe it is, a technical amendment, just to insert the word back in there and make it precise. To coin Mr. Trumpauer's phrase, "You can't fund a project that doesn't exist, especially out of a fund that doesn't exist." It's worded right now, it doesn't exist. It needs the word "local" in there. All nine words have to be in there because it was codified that way in 9212. So, Ms. Tate can say whether there's a technical amendment or not, but it seems like one to me. Now, when that's done, I have no objection to 616.
What's your hourly rate, Mr. Enright?
I know.
That's amazing. Send us a bill.
Send Chris a bill.
Just a citizen.
I'll, I'll hand it to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Enright.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 416.
An ordinance concerning current expense budget supplementary appropriations for the fourth quarter.
Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment makes this an emergency ordinance.
All right. Motion to adopt?
So, so move.
Second. Second. Okay. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as we've discussed, that we are offering a bill to make this an emergency bill due to the fact that the state emergency was declared for the blizzard, and we can move these funds more quickly to pay for the emergency that occurred several weeks ago.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six is the affirmative, one extension, Bill 516 is passed.
Please read 616.
An ordinance concerning current expense budget supplementary appropriations third week special community, benefit district, and one other special community.
516 is on my schedule, by the way. Thank you. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
I was saying.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six is the affirmative, one extension, Bill 516 is passed.
Please read 616.
An ordinance concerning current expense budget third quarter fund transfer and supplementary appropriations.
Any discussion?
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Tate, in light of the comments that were made, is, is there any issues with the current bill as we are voting on it today? It seemed pretty-
I think she, she has the amendment.
She has the amendment?
I think she has the amendment. I'm just gonna draw a poll.
Do you have the amendment?
No one has requested.
I request. I request.
I second his request.
Who wants to request?
It's just something that, that can't, it's just during-
It's a technical, right?
Yes, technical.
It's the Enright amendment?
The Enright amendment.
Is this the Enright amendment?
Government on the fly.
Amendment number one. This is a technical amendment for the name of the video lottery facility local impact grant special revenue fund.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 716 is passed.
Since that was a technical amendment, we're gonna move forward with the vote. Please call the roll on the bill.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 716 is passed.
Please read Title 816.
An ordinance concerning current expense budget impact fee special revenue fund capital budget program Crofton High School supplementary appropriations.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nick.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Six is the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill 816 is passed.
Please read Title 916.
An ordinance concerning current expense budget impact fee special revenue fund capital budget program George Cromwell Elementary School supplementary appropriations.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nick.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Six is the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill 816 is passed.
All right, please call, read the title 1016.
An ordinance concerning construction code certificate of occupancy fee.
Ms. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office. Bill 1016 is one of the two fee cut bills that you have before you tonight. As part of the County Executive's plan to reduce some of the fees and taxes in the county, we've identified two fees. The first is this fee which will eliminate the cost of the certificate of occupancy fee through inspection and permits. We've been reviewing different fees throughout the county, and this fee was identified as one that could be eliminated by the Office of Inspection and Permits. Dan Kane is here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Kane or Mr. Marzick, whichever one, I'm fully supportive of eliminating fees or reducing them, but I guess my question for you is, is when you have a fee, when you have a fee in the county, typically that fee is associated with a cost of some kind. And I guess is there, or was there any calculation in your determination to target this fee that made the decision, I guess, to eliminate? In other words, what was, what's the actual cost of issuing a certificate of occupancy to a applicant? Is that, was that ever calculated? Or do you know?
Yes, Dan Kane, Inspections and Permits. Basically, what's happened is through technology, and we really are trying to use it, the process has become automated, so we don't longer have to use the resources of staff to issue those permits.
Okay, can you describe that process for me? Just briefly, sorry, I don't wanna get down to the weeds, but I just was curious.
I mean, it's just, it's basically software, and it is a, now that, when a permit's finalled, it's automatically issued within the system the next day.
So-
We no longer, we used to have to have staff actually pull it off.
Process it.
Do some processing.
So, there's basically no cost, except for the cost of whatever the upgraded software was, and that's negligible or probably gone long.
Actually, we were able to utilize the existing software that we had.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go into the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Bill 1016? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 1016.
An ordinance concerning construction code certificate of occupancy fee.
Any discussion? Please call the-
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pruski?
Just wanna commend the County Executive and Inspections and Permits. I think this is a great idea to look for things that can be reduced or eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 1016 is passed.
That's great stuff. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9, I'm sorry, 1116.
An ordinance concerning animal control, dog, and cat license fees and adoption fees.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office. Bill 1116, again, is our second bill before you tonight. This bill is a fee reduction. This will reduce the license fees for pet owners in the county, as well as eliminate the adoption fee in hopes to encourage more county residents to adopt pets within the county. Again, this is part of the County Executive's initiative that we had rolled out, again, trying to identify any fees that we can reduce or eliminate within the county and to move forward with this. So, Animal Control is here represented by Robin Catlett, and Kelly Kenny is here from the Office of Law to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Trumpauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. According to the fiscal impact that the administration put together, this would be a revenue loss to your agency, Ms. Catlett, of $185,000 a year. Is that correct?
This goes into the general fund. We have a specific-
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't necessarily money that's gonna come out of your agency.
Correct.
Are you anticipating any individual impact to your agency because of this? I guess what I'm asking is, is your funding still gonna be whole?
As far as I know.
Because, I mean, so, totally support the intent of this, right? I mean, let's make it easier for seniors to adopt pets, but I'm very worried about starving resources from that agency. So, if you guys can sit here and tell me I don't have to worry about that, then I'm fine with the bill.
Does that apply to all votes? Or just to this?
Let's take it one at a time.
Let's take it one at a time. This is four. We got Hammond up now, look!
We don't anticipate any cuts to animal control with the result of this bill.
We don't intend to ruffle any fur on this one.
I knew it was coming.
You've been waiting all day for that, Mr. Hammond, haven't you?
He was, he was.
He thought of that this morning when he put his blue shirt on. Any other discussion? Open up the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak on Bill 1116? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
An ordinance concerning animal control, dog, and cat license fees and adoption fees.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 1116 is passed.
Please call, please read the title of Bill 1916.
An ordinance concerning public safety, animal control, severe weather, animal alert.
Mr. Grasso, I believe you're the sponsor?
Yeah, well, you know, everybody knows how I feel about the chum chums. And, so as far as I'm concerned, you know, the, I come pretty hard-handed on people that are stupid, and for lack of better words, but you know, there's an old saying that ignorance is bliss, and Anorom County, it's expensive. That's the way I feel about things. So, of course, the administration thinks I come just a little bit heavy-handed, so we've just kinda come to a little bit of love in this amendment number one. And I'm okay with it because, for the most part, we're moving to a better situation and protecting the animals because they don't have any other voice than, than us. That's pretty much where it's at. And I'm just at the point where I think it's ridiculous to have animals outside in the cold freezing, and so the County Executive is assuring me that, that there'll be a severe weather alert that'll be posted on media and everything to inform people about animals being outside and outside cold. And of course, it's allowing the animal control people to come out there and check out the situation if they're not complying and write them a ticket. Personally, I think the ticket's too low. I think it should be a lot higher, but that's, that's part of businesses meeting halfway.
have started with those alerts through social media. And when we had our last cold spell, we started with some of those alerts. And we look forward to working with you as we develop this program.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to chime in. So you said it's on social media. Does that get sent out to constituent services list as well? Or put that in the newsletter? David Abrams could add that as well. It's something that's new. That might be something that he want to cover.
We could look at that.
If people are familiar with that, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
So, Ms. Catlett, the, the process would be that somebody calls into animal control like they would normally if somebody was.
Complaint driven.
A dog was malnourished or something and they wanted to report it? Is that, and then one of your folks would go out to investigate?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Peruka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to weigh in here with a little different perspective. And I do it respectfully because I appreciate the sponsor's intent and his passion for this. And I, and I share it. As a matter of fact, I love pets. I love animals. And I absolutely believe that people ought to take care of their animals. But I view this measure, Bill 1916, as an overreaching of government authority. It's minor. It's not, this is not world-shattering. But I want to make, I want to make this point because I think it's a matter that's not within the legitimate authority of county government. The legitimate authority of animal control, I believe, is the control of animals. Presumably, that would be for animals that, for some reason, either sickness, or aggression, or whatever, are, for whatever reason, out of control. And therefore, in order to guard the health of human beings and of the community, the animals must be brought under control. But that, that understanding, in my view, is distinguished from controlling not the animals, but the actions of the owners of the animals. That is, the human beings. And for my part, I took an oath, and part of that oath was to protect the property rights of the citizens of Anarom County. And I believe that animals that are kept as pets are property. I think Ms. Catlett actually testified to that at an earlier hearing at one point. She agreed with that. So they're not human, but they are under the care of humans. And that care, I believe, should be given in a benign and humanitarian way. But our authority as county legislature, I don't believe, extends to substituting our view of that care to the true owner's view of that care. I think to do so is to usurp the authority of all the owners and to deprive them of the property rights that it's actually our duty to protect. Now, granted, there are many actions and omissions on the part of people that cause social harm in one way or another. But that doesn't mean that government has the authority to address each and every one of them and to bring sanctions for each and every one of them. In other words, government is not God. It does not and cannot right all wrongs. And a republican form of government is a limited government. It does not try to play God and does not try to right all wrongs. And I believe, respectfully again, that this measure that's before us goes too far. It's beyond our authority. And I know some people who are charged with the, with animal control tend to be animal advocates, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But I think this bleeds to bigger budgets and less liberty. And I believe our duty is to our constituents. And in that sense, I think we ought to be people advocates. So let me, let me end where I started. I, I love animals. I love dogs. Mr. Grass, I love dogs. And I absolutely believe that people ought to take care of their animals. But I respectfully suggest that, that you ought to take care of your animals and let me and us take care of ours without government interference. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peruka.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Catlett, what, there really isn't, I guess, with regards to the term severe, what, is there some clarity as, I mean, who's going to make the determination on what is severe weather? Is it below a certain temperature, wind gusts? I mean, because it could be 30 degrees, but wind chill of 15? I mean, what's the, who's making the call on that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, or Mr. Walker, if I may, I think that's part of the amendments that we were looking to clarify this. And I guess at the appropriate time, we can address that. I think our goal is to amend this bill to clear it up as to exactly what the emergency would be, which, in the language being offered by Mr. Grass, is an emergency declared by the County Executive.
Okay. And, and Ms. Catlett, it doesn't, it doesn't specify, I mean, I know that the conversation's been mostly around like dogs, because I know that's often what's left out, outside. But I also, as you know, represent the southern part of the county, and there's a lot of farms down there. Now, I know, you know, farmer who has money invested in livestock isn't going to leave them in a position where they're stranded and their investment is, you know, dead the next morning. But I guess is there, it doesn't appear that there's any sort of designation of animals, just animals fairly broad. You know, it's not like domesticated, or I don't know what, you know, I don't know how you would classify like farm animal versus, you know, indoor pet. Is there some distinction being drawn at all?
There are some distinctions, even in the county code, there are distinctions as to shelter for dogs or shelter for other animals. So there are distinctions already in the county code, and I'm sure that would be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I know, I know that there's like run-in shed requirements in South County for things like, so, I mean, that, would that be something that qualified as shelter? A run-in shed?
I don't anticipate, and Bernie can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that the County Executive or animal control would be asking anyone to bring their horse inside if that's.
I guess that's where I was going.
Kind of along the lines of what, of what you're going for.
Yeah, I am. I'm just kind of concerned.
It has to be reasonable for, for the care of the animals.
Would there be a way to, sorry?
There are, as you, as you acknowledged, there are differences in the code for the types of shelter for different animals. And I don't have it right in front of me, but it's something like three walls and a roof, you know, for horses, something like that. It would be anticipated that once the severe weather emergency is declared, that those animals had to be in whatever type of structure was designated for them in the code. So.
Wouldn't it be better to specify that, maybe clarify that?
Again, with the amendments that are being offered, if those amendments are adopted, they would be specific to dogs being kept outdoors.
Oh, I apologize. I guess I was anticipating what you guys already did. I only see the one amendment. Is there more?
Just, just one amendment.
Okay.
I can speak more to it when we get to.
Okay, we'll get there. Yeah, we'll get there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on 1916? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the bill of 1916.
An order concerning public safety, animal control, severe weather, animal.
We do have an amendment. Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment removes perfluous language clarifies that a severe weather emergency must be declared by the County Executive, removes redundant language regarding powers granted to animal control, removes the creation of a Class E civil offense, and instead makes a violation of Section 124801 during a severe weather emergency, Class D civil offense.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
And there's a second? All right.
Second.
And, Mr. Grass, your amendment? I think you kind of touched on it earlier.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. Like I said, it's, it's, we're meeting halfway in the middle, and that's how governments should work, you know? We're both annoyed, so. That's